Roll call, Mr. Charles. Mrs. Lab.
Present.
Mrs. Mordecai.
Present.
Mr. Robertson.
Present.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of meeting, please take notice, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided for in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on July 18, 2016. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the Lobby Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Colavano. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of July 11th, 2016?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, everybody made a motion. I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Superintendent's report, Mr. Retske.
Thank you. We have two presentations tonight. We are beginning with the strategic plan. Charlene Peterson from New Jersey School Boards will lead us through that. After that, we will be discussing the district and the board goals for 1617. I just want to take a moment to thank Charlene. Did a lot of work with the district in general, but myself, the administrators, and running those committees, a lot of work went into it, and I thank you for all of that. Let me go ahead and turn the mic over to Charlene so she can facilitate process. If I can ask the board members to please sit out in the audience so she can present her PowerPoint.
Okay, just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and what I'm going to do is walk you through the process that the staff, the community, and the students went through in the strategic planning process, just to kind of help you understand the process so that, you know, the final output are the goals and the objectives that they developed, but to help you see the process that they went through in providing that output. I know that the board has had the opportunity to see the management report that accompanied the strategic plan, and then part of what we're going to do tonight then is further discuss it. You know, a strategic plan takes into account the, all of the stakeholders involved in the process. So we now, like I said, have initially had the input of the community, the staff, and the students who were in attendance at the strategic planning sessions. So now, tonight, we're going to continue to get more input by allowing the board then to look at the work that was done and provide any additional input that the board would like to add to the outcome. Is it not loading? So the way the process started was, it was a series of three meetings with the intent that, with a strategic plan, we would need to have an understanding of where we are now, where we'd like to be five years from now, and then developing a roadmap to get us from where we are now to where we want to be five years from now. So that took place over a series of three meetings with New Jersey School Boards facilitating those meetings. So the first meeting kicked off with the, like I said, where are we now? And the information was provided by the superintendent, kind of gave a brief overview to those in attendance, and then the community members, we broke everyone then up into small groups of like eight to 10 people, and had them sit and brainstorm. Ah-ha, we're here, okay. Had them sit and brainstorm about the strengths and the challenges of the district, asking them to come up with a top 10 list of their top 10 strengths and their top 10 challenges. Okay, great, thank you. And here, I just put the clicker down too, did I? Whoops. So wanted to first start out, like I said, this plan, you know, could not be possible without the input and the support of, you know, the board for recognizing that the importance of including the community, the staff, the students in this process. You know, we really say that you're kind of taking a leap of faith, of kind of putting, you know, the direction or allowing the input of the direction that the district's going to take in the next five years into the hands of others, but it's really important that we get those voices because the final product could not be the same or could not look the same without the input of all of the different groups. So we had the support of, like I said, parents that were there, staff members, students, community members, and then took all of that input together to come up with a plan. So like I said, it was a three-step process. The process started out with the commitment of the community, all of the people that were there in attendance to help us with the process, with the board and the district in undertaking this process. It's like I said, it was a series of three meetings that started in November, we had another one in December, and then again in February. And we kind of went up the pyramid through each step in the process and the meetings. Like I said, that first meeting in terms of trying to figure out where we are now with the informational meeting where we looked at the strengths and the challenges. The second meeting was the vision, where do we want to be five years from now? And then the third meeting was the roadmap for the writing of the goals. Everything is based around your district's mission statement. The purpose or the intent is that the work that we do all helps support your mission statement. So your mission statement is, you know, what do you do, why do you do it, who do you do it for, and what benefit do they get? So we want to make sure that the work that we do aligned with that, so at every meeting, any of the information that was available to the community always included your mission statement. So like I said, in that first meeting where they were identifying the strengths and the challenges in their individual groups, and they all came back together and reported out to the full group, so this was just some of the findings that the groups came up with in terms of strengths of your district, the diversity of the district, your extracurricular offerings, your technology, your art, music, and drama programs, your high school facilities, the course offerings, your staff, your special education. So these are some of the things that as the community was asked, or the people that were there were asked to identify what they consider to be the strengths of your district. This is, you know, some of their feedback. Then when asked about the challenges, talked about the digital divide, the ability to outreach to all of the parents and caretakers, your vocational offerings, the infrastructure, staff diversity, guidance opportunities, fiscal constraints, and a vibrant curriculum. So again, these were some of the things that the people that were there helped identify for us. So then using that information then of, okay, where are we now? Then the next thing the group was asked to do when they came back to the second meeting to do that visioning was, okay, let's take a step back, kind of pretend that you were on a deserted island for five years, you had no access to technology, and come back to find West Orange on the cover of Time Magazine as a school district that succeeds. So we asked then, again, put them into small groups, asked the group to come up with a title for what that magazine article might look like, what kind of visionary things, what things are going on in the district to justify being there, what kind of technology are the students using, what kind of learning is taking place, what do the facilities look like? So kind of asked then to have them envision what that might look like, and said kind of throw park out the window, throw the budget out the window, like, don't put any artificial constraints in your way, just tell us what is that ideal that you would like for your district's students. So these were the titles of the articles that the groups came up with, with, I said, with their visionary ideas underneath it. Strength in Our Differences, Breaking Barriers Through Creativity, Holistic Adaptive Dynamic, 21st Century Learning, and Nurturing the Joy of Learning. So again, like I said, those were the ideas from the groups. And then when we looked at the work of what the groups had put together, there were some common themes or some common threads throughout their work, those being hands-on, student-centered learning, celebrating diversity, the making sure that you have a facilities and an environment to support 21st century learning, expanded parent and community engagement, to create a culture of self-motivation, creativity, teamwork, and joy in learning, less focus on standardized testing and allow for creative individualized learning, life and social skills, use of technology to expand learning, and then increase career counseling and access to college preparation. So those were some of the themes that we saw throughout, the common themes that we saw throughout the work. So now then we've looked at, you know, where we are now, where we want to be five years from now, and then looked at those common themes and said, okay, how can we put them into kind of four big buckets that would be our goal areas? So these were the, hopefully, okay, so these were the four goal areas then that the group came up with. Facilities and Program Accessibility, 21st Century Learning and Readiness for Future Success, Holistic Health and Wellness, and Parent and Community Engagement. So then when everyone came back for the third meeting to write those goal statements, we took all of the strengths and the challenges from the first meeting and all of the visions from the second meeting and kind of resorted them by these goal areas so that when it was time to write the goal statement, you were using the work that the groups provided and taking that information from the groups and using it to help develop a goal statement from there. So this was then the first goal statement that was developed under the facilities and program accessibility, you know, with the understanding that the goal statements are broad because the strategic plan is over a five-year period. So during that five-year period, you know, recognizing that the goals will be broad, but then we asked them to write some objectives underneath it to help us have a better understanding of what it is that they were thinking. So with the broad goal for facilities and program accessibility, the goal was to create a safe and secure learning environment to deliver 21st century programs and to ensure safe access to sufficient and modern facilities. So again, this is how the group took that work and developed it into a broad statement in this area that they would like to see for your district's students, and then took that and further broke it down and said that, talked about improving district-wide safe routes to school, modernizing the facilities, and expanding the facilities to alleviate the overcrowding. So those were some of the things then that the group talked about as ways then that they would envision this goal being realized. Okay, I'm clicking here. Okay, the next one was 21st Century Learning and Readiness for Future Success. That's kind of then where your student achievement goal was, and in there, the goal was to prepare all students with 21st century skills and knowledge for future success. And some of the things that the group talked about there was to create a student-centered school counseling environment, ensuring access to technology for every student, continued expansion of the STEAM curriculum K-12 that provides active learning opportunities, and also to prepare students for those 21st century skills that they'll need to encourage an individualized approach to student development. So kind of looking at that whole child approach. Then the next one was holistic health and wellness, and the goal there was to elevate the commitment to wellness of West Orange students attending to both body and mind, recognizing the direct correlation between student daily experiences and their mental, physical health. And this group, I can say, had a lot of conversation about this and were really passionate about this, and there was a lot of discussion. So here, some of the objectives were to provide for multiple opportunities for students to get up and move during the day, to make allowances for increased curricular flexibility, to make sure that all students have an enriching learning environment, to encourage healthy food choices, and to create experiences in the classroom that encourage intrinsic motivation. There was kind of a lot of conversation about wanting to find that joy in learning again and how important that is. And then parent and community engagement, and the importance of maximizing two-way communication that was both inclusive and also had transparency with it. And some of the things that that group talked about was creating a public relations committee to make sure that it, you know, represented the needs of all of the community, to improve perceptions of the middle and high school by holding, you know, by having venues to better describe them, to create an outreach or recruitment program for graduates and working parents, to expose students to different career paths and opportunities, and to streamline communication to make sure that, you know, there's a full commitment to transparency through the communication. So those were the four kind of goal areas that the groups wrote. Like I said, the goals were broad, then the objectives helped break that down a little bit. So we really engaged your community, engaged the people that were there in identifying the what. What is it that we want accomplished for the next five years? What is the direction that we want for the West Orange School District for the next five years? So now the next step in the process is taking that what and then determining the how. So how are we going to accomplish that what? So the next step then would be to write or develop action plans, and that will be done once we've, you know, completed all of the input. Like I said, this was the input that the group, from the groups that were there, will continue to take input tonight from the board. So once we kind of finalized what, then there will be action plans developed as to how we're going to accomplish that, understanding that those plans will take, can take up to five years. So we'll outline, we'll take each goal, each objective, and then for each objective to that goal, put a plan together that will identify what are those steps to accomplish that goal, what staff are needed to do it, what resources, what is that timeline, understanding that some things can be done right away, some things may require that money that needs to be budgeted for them, some things may build on one another where first you have to accomplish this step before you can do the next step, before you can do the next step to move the whole plan forward. And then most importantly is what are those success indicators? How will the board know? How will you, as the community, know? How will you know that these things have been achieved? So the success indicators will help us identify those things. And really, that was it then. So that kind of took us through the whole process. So I just want to say how much we appreciate, you know, the fact that the board undertook this process, and for those of you that gave up your time to be part of the process, provide your input. And so we really did have a dedicated group of people who were very involved and very passionate about the work that they were doing, and so we appreciate all of the work that was done. So wanted to, you know, thank everyone for doing that, and then the next step now will be then taking the board input. So the way that we'll do that is go through each one of those goal areas and then take any additional input that the board would like to add to those goal areas. So, go ahead, and we can go ahead and turn the PowerPoint off now then. Oh, somebody, I'm not.
Somebody else. Is there another, somebody else?
accessibility, and the goal was originally to create a safe and secure learning environment to deliver 21st century programs and to ensure safe access to sufficient and modern facilities. So knowing that that was the goal that we're working with, we now would like to take any input from the board then to, that they would like to be included or considered in this goal area as well.
Thank you very much, Charlene, first for all of your work for this evening and certainly for tonight. Mr. Retske, I just wanted to confirm, I mean, we received a goal statement that had been somewhat manipulated but still on point. Do you want to discuss?
Sure. Well, I, my voice is plenty loud here. Charlene, you're just gonna have to get a little closer to the microphone. Yeah, so what we did is, we didn't change anything as far as the goal, we just realigned the first goal. So instead of it saying facilities and program accessibility, it's 21st century learning, facilities, and program accessibility. And the goal statement will read, ensure safe and secure access to and from modernized facilities designed to promote personalized learning and integrated environment for students' grades pre-K through 12. So the goal statement is very similar to what was there, a little bit different. And then under the first objective, we added two words to it. It says, improve safety district-wide and ensure safe routes to and from school. It just said to school, to and from, for all students regardless of transportation mode. So we just took 21st century learning, that was from Goal 2, and included it in Goal 1.
Thank you. Charlene, I just want to confirm, you have this document?
I do now, yep.
Okay. So as we go through that, if you want to read both of the statements then?
Okay.
And then the board will respond?
Okay.
Now that we had both of the statements read, I'd like to ask the board members for comments. I'm gonna start with Mr. Schwartzbaum. Do you have anything on Goal 1 that you would like to add to the discussion so far this evening?
What about on the objective or just the goal statement?
Both.
What I'd like to add, what I'd like to add or amend on the objective is that the, to attempt to alleviate the overcrowding and remove trailers, that, that is a goal, we, no one likes the trailers, and we're all cognizant of the fact that they're there. However, we also have to look into the fact, the feasibility of constructing, and does it work? And, you know, our goal is to eliminate, but we may not be able to do it, so I think we have to put in the word "attempt to."
Fair enough. Thank you very much, Mr. Schwartzbaum. Mr. Robertson?
Okay. First of all, as I looked at the goals, I considered, I went back to the New Jersey School Board Association's definition of a SMART goal. And a SMART goal is supposed to be specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. So, and restating that goal while still trying to encompass the thoughts that both our community, our community groups came up with as well as, as well as our staff, I restated it as looking at, as a 20, the goal statement is to achieve a 20th century learning environment. And that's create a 21st century learning environment that better ensures safety, security, ease of access, in addition to providing modernized classroom learning labs that facilitate technology integration and activation, personalized instruction, independent and team learning, project-based opportunities, and an integrated learning environment for pre-K to 12. Under that, under the objective supporting that, I put, lower the class size to within the 15 to 18 student range, pre-K through 5. It's currently 69% of our K through 5 classes have 20 to 25 students and 89% have 19 or more kids, just to better facilitate the learning environment. Number two, similar to Mr. Schwartzbaum, is eliminate the trailers from all schools. Three is develop an incremental five-to-10-year building and construction plan that addresses not only current overcrowding but also the potential threat of housing and department developments that are planned, as many as three of them planned within the West Orange area, which could potentially swell the district with a huge influx of students anywhere from, you know, 500 to 1500 or more over the next five to seven years. So if we look at that long-term plan. Number four, alleviate our commitment, I'm sorry, elevate our commitment, here I'm incorporating some of the community's information, elevate our commitment to student mental and physical health and wellness, taking in that goal that they stated, and, you know, providing multiple opportunities for student movement, exercise, et cetera, throughout the day to improve well-being, academic performance, encourage healthy food choices, that was in there from the community groups' information. I also added, because, you know, as we look at making potential changes, how do we fund it? I'd like to create a focus on fund development and 21st century public-private strategic partnerships that involve corporations, foundations, and associations, generating grants, donations, internships, mentorships, in-kind partnerships, et cetera, and even look at how to sponsor the building of these classrooms or learning labs or extensions to buildings through these strategic partnerships and fund development effort. That's it.
Okay.
Was that enough? I have more.
That was just plenty, Mr. Robertson, thank you. Mrs. Mordecai?
I need clarification, Charlene, because are we just discussing the goal and not the objectives or the action plan? Because my, I think so many colleagues are going into detail.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
The objectives and not the action plan. All you're doing right now is the goal, the goal statement and the objectives.
Yep.
And the action plan will follow your input.
Okay, because that could take some time.
And just to confirm, it's the administration who sets the action plan, not the board members.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so for Goal 1, most, well, all districts are, main, main objective is student achievement. So for Goal 1, it says facilities and program accessibility, and when, while that's a great goal, and I do thank you, Charlene, and the community for all your hard work on that, I always like to see Goal 1 as a educational goal. So I agree with the revision from the administration for 21st century learning. As far as the facilities and program accessibility, I know we've been working hard on that over the past few years, but I, and I think about five years ago, we did a demographic study to determine whether or not we need more, we need to upgrade our facilities or look at other opportunities. But I think, I agree with this goal, 21st century learning, facilities, and program accessibility, as it's revised.
Okay, thank you. I also will agree with the revision from the administration. You know, everything here has, there's a price tag attached to everything, and that's where the board comes in as far as setting priorities for budgeting. You know, it's a lofty goal, as Mr. Schwartzbaum noted, especially number three, to remove the trailers, but again, our student population is bouncing. On the other side, just as Mr. Robertson said, you know, it is going to be expanding quite, potentially drastically in the next couple of years, and once we find out from the township as to what exactly is being planned. But again, it is a lofty goal to remove the trailers, but we will have to go to referenda to do expansions. So I understand it's a five-year goal, and it's going to take quite the time, but we do need to, again, start with a demographic study to find out specifically what is happening. And again, we're not voting on this this evening, Mr. Charles is not here, so the full board will need to have a discussion on the goals themselves. Okay.
Ms. Lab, can I just add?
Sure, thank you.
The other reason that we're not voting tonight is because your input is important, we're going to incorporate it, then we're going to align the action plans to that, which we'll bring back to you and provide to you for the next board meeting. So we'll be prepared, you'll be prepared to go ahead and vote on the next meeting.
Yes, and then Mr. Charles will have an opportunity to submit his.
Yes, he will, absolutely.
Yeah, his recommendations. Okay, Charlene, if we can go to Goal Number 2, please.
Sure. So Goal Number 2, in the way it was originally written, under the 21st century learning and readiness for future success, was to prepare all students with 21st century skills and knowledge for future success. So knowing we just took the 21st century and moved it to the other goal, we now just kept the readiness for future success part of this as its revision, and it was revised to say, to ensure every student is challenged and engaged by a quality instructional program that prepares students to be successful with their academic, social, and career goals.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartzbaum, any comments on Goal Number 2?
I would like to make the, to add one objective, and that objective is that our goal as a district is that we should be in the top 25% of the state in each area, and being cognizant of the fact that, that is a, a stretch goal, but it's a goal that I think is important that we put in, that we're measured not only against what teachers and testing, but there's the state. And while I think most of us have issues with a lot of the state tests, the fact is there, that's how we're evaluated in, in a broader sense. So I think we should put in a goal, as I said, the goal is to be in the top 25% of the state in each area over the next five years.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
First of all, I really love what Mr. Schwartzbaum just said about the top 25%. Once again, going back, as I looked at the goals, considering that a SMART goal has to be specific, measurable, and time-bound, here's how I restated it. I actually broke it into two parts. One is a student performance goal, and the other has to do with college and career readiness. From a student performance standpoint, to maximize student performance based on internal and marketplace metrics, or what I call key performance indicators, and by doing so, enhance both the competitive college and career opportunities for our students and our school rankings in the process, rankings and ratings in the process. Among the objectives I put were also very metrics-driven. Increase the four-year graduation rate. which is four-year college, actually four-year and two-year combined college, I mean, four-year high school graduation rate versus the five-year, from 86% to 91% by 2021. Metrics-driven, time-bound. Increase the four-year college attendance rate from 60.9% to 85% by 2021, and breaking that out in increments. And the total college attendance rate from 77.5% to 90% over that same five-year period. And this is also in conjunction with creating a, I'm sorry, I forgot to state, creating a robust career, college and career development environment along with that. Number three, to improve our, our PSAT, SAT, and ACT scores by 25%, by a minimum of 25% over the five-year period. And I'm not going to go into the details as to what each of the benchmarks are, but I do have written down where we currently are versus where I think we should be. Build on our AP successes. We have great AP courses, and it's one of our strengths. But build upon our AP successes, increasing the number of participants from approximately 35% or 40% thereabouts. Increase that by another 20 percentage points between now and 2021. Five, leverage some of the activity we already have in district, like the Kelly School, in terms of strategic partnerships with NASA, MSU, but, but expand it to other STEM partnerships and really try to turn our district into a leading STEM district in the state. Six, raise performance of kids in the middle, with a focus on economically disadvantaged, disadvantaged kids, and realizing that we have 44% of our kids are in free and reduced lunch. Next is to raise performance of ESL students by as much as 25% during that, that period. Enrichment, with it's already in progress, but really ensure that enrichment for all occurs to motivate and stimulate children at the highest level. Track performance. We don't do performance tracking by cohort consistently. We've only done it once. And created a, create a student-centered counseling, guidance counseling environment with early, that includes early career planning, early college and career planning as early as elementary school. Continue expansion of STEAM, encourage individualized approaches to student development, and integrate the college and career readiness, including leadership skills that are involved in that into, into the curriculum, once again, starting at the earlier grades, and not waiting until ninth grade before we really address that. And those are some of the objectives I had.
Thank you. Ms. Mordecai?
Yes, thank you. Well, some of what has already been read is actually already written here. I, I agree with the administration's recommendation to move 21st century learning to goal one. And goal two, as revised, saying readiness for future success, is, is fine with me. Increasing the graduation rate, of course, is always the board's objective. But given our student population, our demographics, I, I know from my, my own personal experience, my, one of my sons is special needs, the other child is a general ed student. So attending a four-year college or graduating on time is not always possible for all the students in our high school. So I, I would like to increase the graduation rate, but of course, it depends on the student, the faculty, and the partnership with the parent. So I think readiness for future success is broad enough, and the objectives that are here are fine.
Thank you. I'll agree with Ms. Mordecai. The mobility index also needs to come into play.
Yes.
When we look at the four- or five-year cohort as to who's coming in, in our junior year, senior year, or freshman year, whatever, I mean, clearly that comes into the analysis. But other than that, I would agree with what the administration already amended and added on to the work done by the, the group. Thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Sure, thank you.
I would like to add that we should solicit and utilize staff input in achieving goals. I think it's important that while we have these.
Erv, speaking for Mike.
Well, I think it's very important that we have broad strategic goals and the administration is putting in. But ultimately, it's the staff that's implementing. And we need to really get staff input in how, how best to achieve these goals, because they're really the people on the ground. So I, I think it should be part of our objective. It's, and we should try, attempt to utilize what they want, what their input is, being cognizant of the fact, just like anything, that not, you can't, you can't accommodate everyone's input, but I think it's important that we solicit input.
Thank you. I agree.
Absolutely. I agree.
Absolutely.
Okay. Charlene.
Okay.
Number three.
Number three. Okay, the third goal was holistic health and wellness. So in its original format, it was written, "To elevate the commitment to wellness of West Orange students attending to both body and mind, recognizing the district correlation between student daily experiences and their mental slash physical health." The goal statement was re, kind of revised to say, "Elevate the commitment to wellness of West Orange students attending to both body and mind, recognizing the district correlation between student daily exercise, experiences, and their mental, physical health." So essentially the same.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schwartzbaum.
What I think has to be stated here is that we want, we should encourage all students to be, participate in various sports programs, athletics, as well as to be physically and mentally healthy. The one objective is that, to state that students are student athletes. And it's important what's first. First, you're a student, and then athletics. And it's important to have that coordination of the two. And I think that, again, we want, we want, we want all the students to be physically active, and it's very, very important, it's important from educational, from mental. But again, the, I want to, I think it's important to reiterate the importance of education, of being a student and having those student achievements. And that we should also put in that in order to participate, there has to be minimum academic achievements.
Well, we do have the ASAP program, which is strictly enforced at the high school.
But across, across the board, I think it also should be, you know.
Mr. Rutske, is the ASAP program utilized in the middle schools?
They, they have a different kind of program, similar, but not called ASAP.
Okay.
It doesn't really apply as much down there because they only have a few sports.
Okay.
But it's different. You're, you know, you're removed from the team for different reasons or you're suspended from the team, et cetera.
And my understanding is our threshold is higher than the NJSAII's requirements.
That's correct.
Thanks. Okay.
Yeah, C versus D.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Schwartzbaum?
That's it.
Mr. Robertson?
I, I already stated, I took this goal and just took some elements of it and put it under the 21st century learning environment.
Okay.
I actually didn't like it as a separate goal. I thought it was, it supports other objectives.
Gotcha. Okay. Sandy?
Sure. I, I'd just like to add to goal three. We've been approached by parents over the past few years, and, and I'm, I actually agree with this, about increasing recess time. So I think that would fall somewhere under the objectives of the holistic health and wellness action plan. Because not every child is going to participate in the athletics that we offer here. But if, at the elementary school level, where, you know, we have block scheduling now, so there's not a lot of time left over. So if there's some way to carve out more time for recess, or to take a look at the block scheduling now at the elementary school level, we could increase that, because that then fits right into goal three, holistic health and wellness action plan. And I'm, I know from time to time, we've had complaints that we don't have a large offering of vegetarian, vegetarian offerings at the, both at the high school level and at middle school level. So if we could increase the offerings there for our vegetarians, that would be great. But other than that, I agree with this goal.
Okay, thanks. I've actually served on the district's health and wellness committee now since 2009, so I certainly support this. I wish that there were greater, much greater participation in this goal. Sometimes it honestly was just me and C.C. Minton and Steve Melendez, who, you know, who came to this meeting. And it started out with a gangbuster. In fact, we used to have drop and dance across the district in the elementary schools. And that was really cute. I mean, they just, the whole school danced. And the gym, the phys ed teachers taught the kids how to dance and, but it's nice. But I do understand the constraints where you have X amount of time in the day. You must present whatever curricula is required. But still, they're seven years old. They need to get up and move, or otherwise you're going to lose them. Especially when you have kids, you know, who are ADD, ADHD, I mean, they need to move. But I do understand there's so many variables and components in the school day. But I, I agree with it in concept. And I do know, and I want to note, that we have increased our offerings this year. Coming up, we're now finally meeting the letter of the law in offering dance in the high school. And my understanding, Mr. Rutske, the kids like flock to signing up on that? You want to give us the numbers?
Yeah, well, I haven't, I haven't talked about in a couple of weeks, but I know it was well over 100 and, and growing. There were more kids that were waiting. We have somewhat of a limit because of the class size and only having one instructor.
Right.
So we anticipate, if there is that kind of interest, which we think there will be, you're too might need some additional sections.
Yeah, I mean, movement to each individual student is something totally different. Like Mr. Schwartzbaum had mentioned, all kids should be involved in sports. I actually don't agree. My son was a theater major. And if he, you know, he kind of has two left feet. But if dancing were available to him at the time, that would have been his thing, just so he can get in more roles. So there's an end to each thing, but certainly movement is a good thing. Okay.
I would revise it to physical activity.
I'm sorry?
I will concur and call it physical activity.
There you go.
So it doesn't have to be sports.
There you go.
My son hated sports.
I already did it for you. I wrote down physical activity.
There you go. Charlene's on the case.
Alrighty. Goal four, Charlene.
Okay, goal four was our parent and community engagement goal. And it looks like it's fairly, yeah, it didn't change. So to maximize two-way communication through inclusiveness and optimal transparency.
Okay. Mr. Schwartzbaum.
I'd like to add one thing on the objectives.
Sure.
And that is maybe one or two things, maybe two. The first thing is to get a better understanding, sorry, let me say. I think what we have to do is, given our student population, that there's an educational process of parents that have to, that has to take place. And I think emphasizing the importance of education and what education means to long-term ability for their children where, in the 21st century. And with that, so that's the first thing. And the second thing is really perhaps to get, do some sort of study of what parents not, what their, what their own educational levels are, as well as what their understanding of education of, and I would really look to the administration to how we do this, because I think that's part of the two-way communication.
Okay. Mr. Robertson?
Okay. For the last goal, I renamed it stakeholder engagement. And basically, I feel that we need to create a stakeholder engagement initiative that solicits input from our teachers, parents, and students on an ongoing basis to drive quality assurance and continuous improvement. And so as, first objective, as per best practices, recommendations from the New Jersey School Board Association, conduct to one, conduct one to two times per year, climate surveys that engage teachers, parents, and students and community members, and publish the findings for complete transparency. And making sure that we thoroughly, that it's, it's a real survey, it's detailed, that we promote it in all the channels we have available. And it allows teachers to give ongoing input that way. In addition to that, I'd like just to hold a series of forums, whether you call it public forums, et cetera, but a forum for the teachers that could happen a couple of times a year to provide us with critical feedback. How are we doing? What do we need to do better? How can we better support teachers, parents? How can we better support your efforts? Students, how are we doing? I mean, it's quality assurance, ongoing feedback through those two, two, two channels. And next, to create an outreach program. I do agree with what was part of the existing objectives, to create an outreach program. But I'll be specific about, we need to do outreach to our alumni. We need to have, develop, really manage and develop and manage our alumni database and do outreach to our alumni, as well as to parents and guardians, to, and to engage them as part of career mentorship and, and providing internships and, and as well as supporting college applications and readiness efforts. Next, to really look at, can we provide any sort of quality assurance training for our administrators and, and teachers? There are various ISO quality assurance techniques, whether it's ISO or Black Belt, that helps to really enhance the kind of internal teamwork and problem solving to make sure that we're properly engaging people and getting critical feedback about our various initiatives. There's yet another feedback loop that's involved in this type of training. So stakeholder engagement, I think, is something we need to do better at in an ongoing basis.
Ms. Mordecai?
Yes, I, I agree with the goal as written, parent and community engagement. I think that does cover every, everybody. However, under objective number one, it says, "Create a public relations committee comprised of multilingual parents, teachers, to effectively communicate pertinent school matters." I am not sure if, when this was discussed, this objective, if anyone in the audience knew that we do have a public relations committee of the district already. So I'm, I'm not sure how this would fit in with what we already have.
I think the intent, the conversation at the time was not just, you know, to expand it, to not, to also include multilingual, like to, the committee would be broadened to include, you know, others.
So then the idea would be not create.
But expand.
But expand or offer.
Enhance.
Okay, expand and enhance. Okay.
All right.
Okay, and I know we already have an outreach and recruitment program for alumni, Mr. Robertson. I don't know if you're aware of that. So that, that's already there. I do agree with number three, improve school community perception of the schools. And we've tried to do that a lot with the PR committee, expanding our, our communications platform to include social media, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram. And I think that we're getting a lot of traction on that. However, we can always improve, so I agree with that one as well.
Just one additional comment.
And we also added, number four, for communication. We've also now have our board meetings online, as well as on YouTube, and we've had them televised for several years. So I, I do agree with these objectives. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, you have something?
Yeah, on the alumni outreach, Ms. Mordecai, it's not really happening on an ongoing basis. There are a lot of ways in which we can engage alumni. We had kids who applied to a number of colleges where we had both alumni and students currently attending, and some even offered. We could engage them, whether it's in helping to provide feedback on applications and essays, volunteer to do, to volunteer with their colleges, to be interviewers, be intermediaries in conjunction with admissions. There are all sorts of things, as well as for those who graduated several years ago, to potentially provide internships. These are things that we're not really, not really doing right now. The intent may be there, the execution is not.
I, I agree. They have to just go to the website and click on the alumni button and input their information. And someone of our lovely faculty out there, somebody will reach out to them as soon as they submit their info.
Well, I guess the word again, as Mr. Schwartzbaum said, is to enhance what is already existing.
Exactly.
It certainly does need to be broadened a lot, but I don't want to discount what we've done already and through our guidance department, so.
Expand and enhance for number two as well.
Yeah. And again, that would come under the action plan, which the administration creates. Yeah, but other than that, we, again, the, the public relations committee, as Ms. Mordecai mentioned, it does exist already. But consideration of expansion on some level is certainly. is certainly something to consider. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so just to kind of recap then, so we took the input from the board, so that input will be taken into consideration then, so as we looked at the goals the way they currently stood, we did run one revision based on the input of the administration. Now, we will do another revision based on the input of the board, and have some goals in more of a finalized form then, for the board to consider at their next meeting, and then the administration will develop action plans to kind of provide the how is then to how those goals will be accomplished.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So, are we ready to move on to district and board goals?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, then, the next step in the process then, while we have now our strategic plan goals to lead us through the next five years, the next step in the process is for the board to set annual district goals. The board is required to do so, because those are the goals that are in the superintendent's evaluation, so the board and the superintendent set them together to help set the direction for the district for the next year, so they are one year in length, so those goals will help us provide those areas of focus, understanding from all of the things that we've just talked about from the strategic plan, all of the things that, you know, a superintendent has to do in a given year. We now are going to take a step back and pick those, say, four things that we say are so important, that this is what we want the focus to be for this next year, and to the point that we are going to hold the superintendent accountable for achieving them. So, and the reason we call them then district goals is because it does require the work of the whole district to bring it all together, that, you know, the board right now is going to help the superintendent be involved in what, what those goals are going to be, then again, action plans are written for those goals, again, for the how, and then it's typically, as we've said, the staff are the ones that translate them, do the work, you know, help bring them to life, and then we'll come back to the administration, report what's working, what's not working, perhaps where we, you know, need to tweak and make changes, and kind of consider it to be like a stair-step type model, where we're setting the base this year, the base of what we want, you know, the direction of the district for the year, and then ideally, that base should be evidence in the building goals that the principals set, and we should see some evidence of the learning that's taking place in the classrooms, so everyone in the district is working together to help accomplish these goals that we are now setting the basis for tonight. Then, separate from that, we are also, we'll talk about some board goals, knowing that one of your board members is missing tonight, we won't finish that process also, but the difference in board goals are that those are goals that you, as the board, can control the outcome of. You, as the board, are responsible for accomplishing them and the work that needs to be done toward them, so it's strictly board processes. So, that's kind of the difference between the two, so as we then now, you know, we'll talk about then the district goals, so what are those goals, or what is that, you know, those focus areas that we want to talk about then for 2016 and '17?
So, one of the most important goals, Charlene, is obviously aligned to the strategic plan, because that drives everything that's going to happen within the district, so I propose some language to prioritize, communicate, and effectively implement the five-year strategic plan in order to improve student achievement and the operations of the district. So, it's broad enough, it allows us to prioritize within the strategic plan, over the five years, what needs to be done, and what has to be done first, et cetera, all the way through the five years. Obviously, it needs to be communicated well, because everybody in the district, all the parents, every single stakeholder has to understand what the strategic plan is, and what needs to be accomplished through the strategic plan, and obviously, effectively implement it, not only just year one, but for year two through five as well.
Is the rest of the board in agreement with that as being a district goal for next year?
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes, I'm in agreement, but I would like to add one thing in line with the overall strategic goal of being in the top 25%, which conversely means you need to be at the 75% in the 75% percentile, is that, and we have a five-year plan, which would mean it's 20, a 20% improvement, that I would put in that in each area that we improve by, by an additional 20% in order to get to the 75%. By way of example, I downloaded, let's say, ELA performance, you know, for grade nine, and we're at only 38% of the class. This is a high school, and we can do this by.
Down by park?
No, this by park, yes.
Park, okay.
Yes, so, to, to implement a 20% improvement in order to get to our goal, and that's what I would do, and in the implementation plan, it would be to go by grade by grade.
Okay. The, the only issue with that is that that is very specific, which the goal is not to be specific, that would fall within, that's one of the goals within the goal. So, the, the idea behind it is that we wanna improve across the board and everything, and all of those have to be identified, so you're talking about a park score that half the kids didn't take, they didn't take the park, and some that did, didn't take it seriously, and so on and so forth. So, we have to look at the realistic, you know, options of, when you're building that goal, especially a district goal, that you're understanding what fits into that goal, and what you're talking about clearly fits in to the goal that I'm, I'm recommending.
Okay. I, I'm, the, I, I just wanna reiterate, the qualitative versus quantitative, and that's really emphasizing while qualitative goals are ver, are very important on a conceptual basis, and those are the objectives, but the, ultimately, when, in order to judge effectiveness, and whether you're actually achieving, achievements, you have to be on some sort of quantitative basis, that's all, that's all, and I think they both need to be in, that's all.
I agree.
Mr. Robertson?
I am, I concur with Mr. Schwartzbaum. I, I think that the overall goal is fine, I think that we have to be careful, looking back at what a smart goal is, being specific enough, while I understand it's supposed to be broad enough to be all encompassing, but being specific, being measurable, being time-bound, this is, of course, time-bound by a year, but as long as it's clear that as part of this, we are prioritizing, we are communicating, and as we are effectively implementing, we're identifying what the metrics, what the incremental metrics are that occurred during that first year, and how that builds into the five-year plan, and I'm not sure where we'll come in, but I would still like us to, to go back to, at some point, fully execute a real SWOT analysis that's driven by the quantitative data, and, and that that should be, that, that really needs to be part of it. I agree that we've, I worry we focus too much on qualitative data, and we really need to build the quant in there. So, the overall goal is fine, I think it needs to be reworked to make sure it's clearly stating the metrics, some reference to metrics, prioritization, communication, implementation, all that's fine, but the metrics and the SWOT analysis in there somewhere.
Ms. Mordecai?
Sure. Okay, I, I just wanna add a word to, to goal number one, to prioritize, communicate, and effectively implement the strategic plan in order to improve student achievement and the efficient operations of the district. I'd like to add the word efficient.
Sandy, just so you remember, he did insert five-year when you read that.
Oh, yes.
Five.
Implement the five-year strategic plan in order to, yes, adding the word efficient before operations.
I'm fine with the goal as written, I have no problem with adding the word efficient operations, that's, that's fine with me.
It's fine.
Okay. Number two?
Yeah, I also just wanted to reiterate before we move on, that, you know, in this particular case, the metrics come in the action plan.
Yes.
You know, what's different here is that we have to recognize that we are not the educational experts, so our job is to set the what, and then what's important in the action plan are those indicators of success, so that's where the metrics come into play, is letting the educational experts tell us what those metrics will be, what those indicators of success will be. So, right now, in the goal, we're setting the what, with the understanding that we need to know that information and able to, be able to determine whether the goal was accomplished or not, so it is part of the action plan.
And again, the role of the board is to set the parameters, and the administration does the detail, that is not our role.
That's true, we just have to make sure that the two are in sync. If you have a vision for the district, and that vision is in any way quantifiable, you have to make sure that everything adds up, whether it's, as Mr. Schwartzbaum's pointed out, being in the top 25%, whatever. So, you know, I understand that the district will go through the detailed action plan, that that will involve metrics, we just have to make sure that at the end of the day, and it is part of our job, to make sure that what we're doing incrementally gets us to that long-term vision, long-term goal, that it all adds up at the end.
Well, of course.
That's the purpose of the goal. Remember that there's multiple goals within this goal.
Yes, four, at least.
So, that's the quantitative piece that will be addressed. It's the strategic plan goals that fall within this goal, and that's where the quantitative comes in.
Thank you, Mr. Rutzke.
All right, let me read the second one, "to evaluate the special education department by analyzing the current programs, methodology, and communication plans in order to meet the individual and specific needs of the students."
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
I would just add one, to be with, to meet the state guidelines.
Which state guidelines?
For special ed.
Well, we're required.
The requirements.
Where did you want to insert that?
Method on the communication, in order to meet the individual needs of the students.
In all in compliance.
And to be in compliance with state, state, state guidelines.
Well, it's also federal as well.
Federal and state, right.
Mr. Robertson?
I'm fine with that, thanks.
With the insert with?
Both, the existing goal with the augmented.
Insert a federal and state, yes. Okay. Sandy?
I'm fine with it as well.
I'm good, good. Mr. Schwartzbaum, how about, Rutzke?
Yeah, I'm just writing, I'm just writing, Mr. Schwartzbaum. Okay, last one, "to evaluate the guidance department by analyzing the current programs, supports, and services that would align the preparation of our students to our college and career readiness goals."
Before I call on the board members, Mr. Rutzke, can you just state or give some background information that there are college and career readiness goals throughout?
Each grade level, each grade level, there's, there's college and career readiness goals, and it's important that we, when we're saying evaluate the guidance department, this is a K-12 process, so we're looking at what's happening in elementary, and how are we aligning the needs of our, our students and staff, et cetera, to the guidance department, and to the middle, and to the high, the transitions in between. So, again, evaluating the entire department, and looking at the entire K-12 department.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
I'm fine with it.
Mr. Robertson?
Could we just state in there that students K to 12? He's giving the explanation, but it wouldn't hurt to have it in there.
I agree.
Because usually when people see guidance, especially if people go to the website, they're automatically thinking high school.
Well, I don't know if that's necessarily true, there's a lot of counseling that goes on in middle school.
There's a ton of counseling, yes.
Yeah, so.
That's true.
Yeah, so I would.
But K to 12 wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I, I agree with you. Sandy?
I'm fine including the addition of K to 12.
Okay, the, the, look, when you're looking, same thing with special ed department, so we're gonna say K-12 special ed department, it's a given that it's K-12, unless we specify to evaluate the high school guidance department, the middle school guidance department, guidance is K-12, so there's no reason to indicate that it's just K-12 on one, then it's not on others.
We, we can put it on both, but Mr. Rutzke, I think that when, while we know that guidance occurs in, you know, from K to 12, I'm not sure that all parents going to the website realize that there's supposed to be college and career readiness at each stage of the, of the game, so, it, it, you know, it, that little tweak, it doesn't change the meaning of it, it just has a little bit more specificity for somebody who may not be aware. I'm okay with adding it to both.
I think the point is to the layperson versus the professional, to a layperson. A layperson, when one uses the term guidance department, it usually is, is interpreted as high school for college entry versus special ed is across the board, but, you know, if you wanna put K-12, it's just, if you wanna put it in parentheses, whatever you want, it's just, it's more, professionally, you're 100% correct, guidance is K through 12, so is special ed, but, but from a layperson, I think most people don't understand that.
Okay, so then I'll just add pre-K through 12 for the special ed as well, so we're consistent.
Good.
Or alternatively, not to make you crazy, on number three, if you wanna just change the language in the last part of it to include preparation for all of our students, and that would be inclusive, because again, the layperson reading this, they'll see college and career readiness, and they're like, well, I have a second grade, what are you doing for me? And so, if you just clarify it as preparation for all of our students, or something, but again.
Students K-12.
Yeah.
They'll get it, I mean.
It's K-12, I would put it in, because people in K don't think about college.
No.
I mean, let's be honest, let's be honest.
No, they don't, they think about what's going in the lunchbox.
People in first grade don't think about college.
Parents for elementary school may not think about it.
You have one of those.
Okay.
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 So, that's what I have for the district goals.
Okay.
Okay, and is the board comfortable with those being your three district goals?
I would like to add one, the commencement, to commence a facility management study.
We did talk about that, yeah, that's a good idea.
Explain what you mean by that.
Understanding, getting some data points, understanding how many students we have, where our projections are, how many children in the school, what our, what our capacities are, and then trying to project out where, where our needs are, and, and, and begin, and begin the conversation. I, I know that we will not complete this in one, in one school year, but it's a very sensitive topic, let, let's all be honest. Parents who live in certain areas want children to attend those schools. The question is, is their capacity? Do, do we have a need to move, to move children around? There will be people who will be very happy, and some people who won't, and we can't railroad it down someone's, parents' throat, so I think it's, it's really a process of trying to work through the data, understanding, is everyone gonna be happy? I could tell you this today, you're not gonna get 100% of the, of, of the, the parent body to be happy, but we need to start to understand, where do we need to build, and it's a process, so we have to start somewhere, and I think it's an important thing to do.
Well, I would agree, however, I think it should be more of a board goal than a district goal, because there's my attach to that as a demographic study and all that other good information, so.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
The only thing I'd add, Mr. Schwartzbaum, is that is clearly one of the priority goals coming out of the strategic plan. It's definitely going to be one of the priority goals for year one, that we need to look at this, because we've gotta take some action, and you're right, it's probably a two-year study before we can make a recommendation, but certainly this is gonna be one of the priorities coming out.
And, and it will be, we will need community input.
Absolutely.
Well, we did that the last time, we had a large committee that met for over a year, so it's definitely not a monthly, or, you know, let's bang it out and move everybody around, that's just not gonna work, so.
But to Mrs. Lapp's point.
I'm fine, I'm fine with making it a board goal, so, and then we could start outlining what the specific action plans and data points that we need to do, because people, everyone has an opinion, but ultimately, this really will come down to some data, we need data, you need data.
Population movement.
You need data, it's, every, I, we, we all know what everyone's gonna say. I, I'm very happy, I, I don't wanna move from where I am, so.
You serve on the planning or the zoning board, which one?
Zoning board.
Okay, could you give us some data?
Sure, absolutely, I can give you data.
How do I have to press, like real data?
Real data.
Not just 411 data.
I think, I think your concern is just on the master planning, not from the zoning board.
I understand. Nothing personal there.
Okay, so now that we have segued into board goals.
All right.
So I have then the goal that was written to commence a facilities management study, and under that, underneath that would be a demographic study.
Who's the demographic?
So what other things would the board like to focus or work on for the board for this next year?
Well, again, Mr. Charles is not here tonight, so we're not going to have a totally inclusive discussion, but I for one would like to have a finalization on our contracts.
Yep.
Completion of all negotiations.
All of them.
Yes.
Are my colleagues in favor of that?
Yep.
Yes.
Got it? Okay.
I would, I would say another goal is, this is from last year, and I would, I think we should put it in. I don't think it has to change, to maximize opportunities to lessen the burden of taxpayers.
The fiscal one.
Fiscal responsibility goal.
In order to maximize investment focus, students, da-da-da-da, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep, that's good.
Okay. Unless the board wants to add anything else, why don't we wait for Mr. Charles to come in and?
I'd like to just add one thing.
Go ahead.
I don't know whether or not it's going to end up in the strategic plan, but I would like to see some sort of stakeholder engagement in the form of a climate survey, which once again, the School Board Association recommends, and some community groups. I don't think that we need to wait for a strategic planning period, or until we have a room full of hundreds of people to find out that something's wrong, or that something's needed, or that there's a feeling out there. I think if we have, do a better job of having our hand on the pulse through surveys, through forums or groups, that it gives people more opportunities for feedback along the way, and it makes us better informed as a board. So some sort of stakeholder engagement in the form of climate surveys and community groups. That, that include our teachers, our parents, and our students.
I mean, it could be something as easy facilitated as, on something on our website, where suggestion box, if you will, in cyberspace. I mean, that's something that, you know, people could either anonymously or not, or state their name, and just give us some feedback. I mean, we don't have to wait to collect.
To the board goal for that.
I think though.
Okay.
I mean, note of it.
Okay.
And I would add one more thing.
I'm sorry, sir.
Goal from last year, I think it's a, it want, continue a professional development of the board. I think it's important that we all, we all participate.
Well, actually, this year we became certified.
You're next.
You never get too much.
No, the board, the board is certified.
Since we're on a board, since we're part of Board of Education, you never have too much education.
No, you're absolutely right. We're just teasing, but.
But we're required by the state.
We like to read, too.
Absolutely.
Well, unlike any other public official, we are required to have a professional development.
Here we are.
We have mandatory training as well as optional.
Uh huh.
Just one more point on stakeholder engagement. While an inbox or a suggestion box is nice, when we did the superintendent search survey, we had somewhere between 225 and 250 teachers respond, and that was a detailed questionnaire. It was a very detailed survey that allowed us detailed feedback with data points. They gave us actual data as well as information. When you do a real survey, and not just one or two open-ended questions, it gives you more, you can still have open-ended questions on it, but it gives you more data and information. It really does.
Can we do that under goal four?
Data, data, data from our decisions. Let us know what people are feeling. Huh?
Mr. Robertson, goal four of the strategic plan includes that.
Only if that's included. It wasn't in the original goal, and I mentioned it, but I don't know if that's going to be incorporated.
Well, Charlene's taking notes, and Mr. Rutzke's taking notes, so yeah.
Just want to make sure.
Goal four is stakeholder engagement.
All right.
So that, that could be included there.
Okey dokey.
So that's not going to be a board goal, then? That will be part of the district?
If it's in the strategic plan, it would not be.
It's on the goal four of the strategic plan.
If it's going to be.
Okay.
I think we concluded our work, at least in setting the goals for this evening.
Thank you, Charlene.
So I appreciate all the board input and the, not only setting the direction, or help setting the direction for the next five years, but also setting the direction for the next year. So, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlene.
Take care. Okay.
All right. Say what?
Number 15.
Okay. Here we go. Before we move forward, are there any questions from the public on agenda items only? Ms. Freevo.
Come on down.
Sue Freeval, Ten Roger Avenue. It's really just a logistical question, but are there copies of the policies that are being read tonight?
They should be on the website under first reading.
They're not, and they're not anywhere here either. In the past, when we've read on policies, they've been, there've been copies available, and there's, they're not in the attachments. They're not anywhere.
Mr. Calabano, did you bring them?
Nope.
I apologize. I thought they would be, and they should have been, and I'm sorry they're not. I didn't know.
Okay.
Okay, because normally it's first reading and click, and there you are, but, okay. Duly noted. We'll have them up tomorrow, right, Mr. Calabano?
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from the public on the agenda? Yes. If you could just state your name and address, please.
Joy Burnett, 63 Pealot Place. Can I address the report?
Of course.
Okay. I just sat and I listened to the beginning of the report where they showed that people on the committee had said one of the challenges was diversity in staffing. And we just went over, I heard you guys go over the entire thing, but I didn't see anything or hear anything unless I missed it in the action plan about diversity and staffing. As a parent at Hazel, my, I'm sending through my second child in Hazel, and they have never seen a teacher that looks like them in that building.
Yep.
As a staff member and a parent, I personally have had incidences where I and my children are educating staff members about cultural diversity. And so there's an insensitivity for a lot of things, and part of the things, part of the insensitivity is that people who are teaching in the district are coming out of communities where they are not diverse. So they're ignorant of many things that are insensitive. And I find myself with people that I have worked with in the district, or, you know, in different schools, educating people on things that are common knowledge to me. And, you know, I saw that we talked about health and holistic, and things that children experience every day. Cultural diversity is an issue.
Yep.
You know, when I have my daughter come home and say to me at the high school that when she came back from the MLK holiday, she had a teacher ask a lot of the black students in the class, what did they do for the holiday? And MLK is not a black holiday.
It's an American.
It's an American holiday.
Yes.
You know, so I think, I know that staffing has been an issue for as long as I've lived in this district, 14 years. And I'm really surprised that out of this entire thing that has been discussed over the last hour, that there was a start at the beginning talking about diversity, but it was never brought up in the action plan. And it's very difficult for people, the entire administration, as far as from the level of Mr. Rutzke and supervisors, are not people of color. So it's not even really trickling down, because you can't, if you don't have the staff there.
Right.
To even educate other staff, then it's a, it's not a good situation even for the students. Even projects and things over the years that my children have had to do, I've had to go in and explain, this is not a good project. You're putting my child in a bad position. You're putting me in a bad position for explaining certain things to my child that maybe I don't want to address. So I just want to say that if we're not going to hire more staff, we should at least be doing diversity and sensitivity training. That should be a professional development that the staff can, should be, that should be included going forward.
I'm going to ask you to stop.
Yeah, I'm done.
But actually, Mr. Rutzke, did you want to respond to that?
Sure.
Because I know it's in the action plan.
Yeah, Joy, the, the action plan itself, what we're looking at are the, the goals and the objectives. The action plan do reflect that we're working on trying to recruit more diversity as far as our staff. We've actually begun two years ago, really trying to get out to different places to recruit more diversity within the staff. It's clearly a priority. I know it's been a priority for several years, but not only have we been trying to do it the last two years, we're making it part of the actual action plan that goes into the overall strategic plan.
Could we do some professional development of diversity and sensitivity?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Rutzke, if I may, back in 2010, we did a diversity study of the district, and some of those things were identified, and I believe we put in place diversity training. I thought that was still in place, and not just for new staff, but for everyone. So if you could just please follow up on that.
And I would note, not just, in being specific about diversity training, bringing in somebody from the outside who specializes in, and not just diversity, I'd call it diversity and cross-cultural communications. And to Mrs. Burnett's point, you know, I've, my kids, I've had, I have a son who at one point experienced some, what I'll call unconscious bias, and I've heard from a bunch of parents the same, so my apologies for that not reappearing in the, in the objectives, but we're on, we're definitely on the case. There's already been some movement, and we're trying to recruit from HBCUs. We also need to be looking at Hispanic service institutions, and I know that there's South Asian folks out there who are wondering, like, you know, where's, where teachers look like me as well. So, and their kids are. So thank you for raising that and for keeping us on our toes. But yeah, diversity and cross-cultural communication, you know, sensitivities built into that, definitely needed.
We, we also have a district community, a diversity committee through the district, which includes members of the community. We haven't met in some time, but I know our HR director, Mrs. Wallace, just came back from, I believe, Howard University in DC, right, for the diversity job fair. So we are trying really hard to make sure that our faculty and staff is reflective of our student population.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public on the agenda at this time? Seeing none. May I have a motion for personnel items one through five as amended? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm doing it again. First reading of the following policies. Boy.
Almost, almost got it.
All my work. I forgot about it. May I have a motion, and I'll put them all together, visitors 1250, district records and reports 3570. We will not be addressing the attendance, absence, and excuses policy. We're taking that off the agenda this evening as we await more information from our district doctor, and also adding on expenses and reimbursements 9250. May I have a motion to move those on first reading?
I'll make a motion.
Before, can I just make a recommendation? Since we didn't have the policy out for visitors, you just go ahead and read it. I know it'd take, well, it'll take a couple of minutes, but because.
Okay.
It wasn't available, I think it would be important for people to hear, and then we'll have it available for them on the website tomorrow.
Good idea.
But the other ones?
No, the other ones were available last meeting.
Yeah.
And, and we just didn't, you didn't address them last meeting.
Actually, I have a very brief summary of the other ones anyway, because that's all they really require. All right. So let me have a motion for those three policies on first reading.
I'll make a motion.
Pick one.
I'll second.
You got that, Mr. Calabano?
I have it.
God bless you.
All together now.
All right. I will read the first reading of the visitor policy. And first, I'll give you the summary of the changes, then I'll read the policy in its entirety. We have clarified the definition of visitor. We have confirmed the parameters for rationale to visit, and we have confirmed and established protocol for scheduling visits. We have put in language regarding banning of recording devices and a discussion of recourse for breaches of confidentiality. Also, we have a process now for follow-up and establish, I'm sorry, we've established a process for following up on questions from the parent or visitor. The policy in its entirety, visitors. The Board of Education acknowledges the right of a parent guardian and/or parent representative, collectively known as visitor, to observe their children in a classroom setting or prospective classroom setting during their child's school day under certain circumstances, including, one, the effective implementation of a child's individual education program; two, if there are any articulable safety and health and welfare concerns; and three, if there are any additional concerns where the superintendent or his designee must determine if the requested observation is warranted. The intent of classroom observations by visitors is not to provide judgment about curriculum, instruction, teacher performance, or pupil performance. The Board of Education provides opportunities to monitor a child or children's progress through progress reports, report cards, IEPs, conferences with teachers, work samples, and program data collection. The superintendent specifically reserves the right to deny parents, guardians, or any other visitor the opportunity to observe their child's or children's class or any other class when the presence of the parents, guardians, or any other visitor would be disruptive or distracting to their child or other students or the teacher. A visitor requesting permission to observe the child in a classroom setting or prospective classroom setting must submit a request to the principal and director of special services at least 10 school days before the requested observation date. The request shall be in writing and shall indicate the date and time period of the requested observation and the visitor's reasons for such observation. The principal or designee will confer with the classroom teacher and will determine if the visitor's observation request will not unnecessarily disrupt the educational program or lesson planned by the classroom teacher. In the event the principal determines in his or her sole discretion, the observation will disrupt the program or lesson planned during the observation time requested by the visitor, or the principal or designee is unable to accompany the visitor on that requested date and time, the principal or designee will suggest an alternative time and/or date for the visitor observation. The visitor must report to the principal or designee's office on the day of the approved observation, at least 10 minutes before the requested time. The visitor must provide adequate proof of their identity. The visitor will be accompanied into the classroom by the principal or designee, who will remain with the visitor during the entire observation in the classroom. A classroom observation will not exceed 60 minutes. There shall be a maximum of two visits per school year unless additional days are approved by the superintendent or designee. The visitor will be inconspicuously positioned in the classroom as not to disrupt the instructional activity or to be a distraction to the teacher or students in the classroom. The visitor shall refrain from talking or commenting while in the classroom. The visitor must keep any confidential information obtained during their class visit other than information relative to the child. Therefore, information including but not limited to the names of any other children in the class, any activities of other children in the class, and any class and class discussion, questions, or comments by other students in the class shall remain confidential. During the observation time, no recording devices are permissible. Approved visitors to classroom shall refrain from discussing any issues, behavior, or the personal identity of students to anyone not privy to the observation. The following are permitted: the teachers, child study team members, counselor, supervisor, principal, and superintendent. The inappropriate release of information has the potential of jeopardizing the privacy interests of individuals, as well as exposing the visitor to individual liability. Visitors who improperly leak information may be personally liable for damages and shall not be entitled to indemnification for actions brought against them by third parties. At the conclusion of the classroom observation, the visitor and principal or designee shall quietly exit the classroom. The visitor may submit to the principal and director of special services in writing any question he or she may have as a result of their classroom observation. The principal, director of special services, or designee will respond to the visitor's questions in accordance with district protocol. When the parental rights of a parent have been terminated by a court.
Court.
Oh, that is typo. By a court of appropriate jurisdiction, the legal guardian must inform the school so that the administration may apply appropriate regulations. The principal shall seek confirmation of legal custodianship where necessary. No one may visit the school during school hours for the purpose of recommending or exhibiting books, maps, et cetera, to staff. No person shall be allowed to deliver any address or lecture on any subject unless authorized by the superintendent or designee. All visitors must obey rules designed to ensure orderly operation of the school. All persons violating this policy shall be considered dis- All persons violating this policy shall be considered disorderly persons and subject to appropriate action. Any classroom observations by any person other than the school district personnel or school district approved service providers shall comply with the observation, with the observation provisions of this policy. And that is the policy on first reading. Moving forward. Two, number, district records and reports. Very minor changes. Basically, the, geez, where am I? The New Jersey Division of Archives and Records is now being promulgated by the New Jersey Department of Treasury, Division of Revenue, and Enterprise Service Records Management Services. Also, there's new language added that really does not apply to our district, but school boards have opted in anyway. It's a reference to school districts of 500 or fewer and their regulations. That are, that is the only real change on the district records and reports. Also, minor changes to expenses and reports where they're adding the word trustees after.
Reimbursements.
I'm sorry?
Reimbursements.
Thank you. Expenses and reimbursements. They're adding the word trustees after board members, because some boards collectively are called trustees. There's also a note change from the Department of Treasury OMB circular from A-87 to 16-11-OMB. And that is the only change on that one. Mr. Calabano? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
May I have a motion for personnel one through five as amended?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. Mr. Calabano?
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes, except for an abstention for Nicole Macardle at Washington School.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
May I have a motion for curriculum instruction, item one?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion among the board? Seeing none. Mr. Calabano?
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
We have a motion for finance, special services one through three and business office one through six.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I would like to comment, though, on item number three from special services. Although our monies for the preschool went up $844, which is really sweet, the money from IDEA went down $77,000. Not too sweet. Any other comments from the board on business items? Seeing none. Mr. Calabano?
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President, President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes. Okay. Reports from the board president and board members. Mr. Schwartzbaum, got anything?
No.
All righty. Mr. Robertson?
Nada.
Nada.
Nothing.
Summertime and the living is easy. We've got nothing for you.
Exactly. Enjoying the summer.
All righty. Funny. Okay. I do want to make note, though, the previously planned board meeting for August 1st has been canceled. We decided to incorporate agenda items onto tonight, so you don't get to see us in four more days. Yay. Okay.
Lucky you.
Lucky you. May I have a, the next board meeting, by the way, will be held 8:00 PM on August 22nd at West Orange High School. Petitions and hearings from the public. Anybody? Sue?
Sue Freeval, Ten Ridge Avenue. I'll have comments on the visitors' policy after I'm able to actually read it. But it reads as if the problem is confidentiality, when the issue has been the superintendent denying observations for spec ed parents in particular, and the board has still not really addressed this. But I'm coming to follow up for the third time on ESY options for students who are not in self-contained classrooms. When I brought this up, it was well before ESY started, and these questions are not academic. They do involve actual kids and actual families who are affected. In one case, a family who had asked for stepping forward for their child, who is academically ahead but socially and behaviorally challenged, was denied, even though West Orange does send out-of-district kids to that same program. In-district kids do not cost us money when we send them, when we only offer them the self-contained ESY programs. Still have not gotten answer on what options there are. Parent decided the only way that they could do this is to make it cost the district as little money as possible. So she came up with a plan where the child attended the high school enrichment program, and she paid, she transported, she only asked support services to pay for an aide to accompany him. Support services did not in any way, shape, or form oversee this program. It did not go well. After the parent tried to contact the case manager for several days, she finally went straight to the super, to the director when the aide actually wrote down that they could not keep the child safe. This was in writing on his behavior log. Child was allowed to run in the parking lot. The child was climbing the bleachers and the fences. So when we are putting children to ESY programs and not making sure they are overseen, it's a big deal. The parents paid for this program. The child only attended for half of it. It did not go well. Needless to say, skills were not maintained. They were, in fact, worse than they were before. This is a question I asked way back in the spring. I'm still waiting for an answer on what options we provide for children who were not in self-contained settings. Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Mr. Rutzke?
Okay. So the first one is that it's been indicated many times that there's plenty of spec ed parents who have been able to observe their, their child in the classroom. So obviously, you know, the statement about that spec ed parents are denied is obviously not accurate or, or not true. The second, as far as the ESY program, we've been looking at it very closely. Since you have brought that to our attention, I've had meetings with individuals. And I would ask that the parent you are talking about, please reach out to me specifically, being that you indicated they already reached out to Ms. Salambino. So please ask that, if you would, please ask that parent to reach out to me tomorrow or as soon as they're available, so I can understand exactly. I'd be glad to meet with that person and find out exactly what happened, so we can try to fix that problem. Thank you.
Sam, please? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.